Call to order, the December 5th, 2023, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Gene, could you take role, please?
Sure. Sean Kevlin?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Aton Gobern?
I'm here.
Peter Boynton?
Aye.
Gemma Wilkins?
Here.
And Chris is not here today?
Chris is not.
Okay. All right. Continued public hearings, 315 Turnpike Street, Gray Star Development East LLC. Application for limited site plan review under Article 8, Part 3, Site Plan Review and Article 10 Administration, Section 195, 10.7 of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. Applicant proposes construction on Merrimack College campus of a 77,600 square foot building situated along Turnpike Street and a 62,000 square foot building situated along Andover Street. Both buildings are comprised of academic and residential space for college use. The site is located in the R3 zoning district. Gene, can you tell us where we stand for today?
Sure. All information the board has requested has been presented, and tonight a draft decision has been prepared for your consideration.
Okay. For the record, I was not present at the last meeting. I did watch the full hearing on the recording and have filed a letter indicating as such. We do have five members here who all can vote if we move to close the hearing. Okay. All right. Is there any more information that you wish to present at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any more public, is there any public comment that's come in via email?
No.
Is there any members of the public that wish to make comments? Seeing none. Board members, are there board members that wish to make questions, comments at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, go ahead.
First, Gene, on the draft decision, we talked at the last meeting about having some note about Mass DOT and providing additional space for a right-of-way for an extra lane on Elm Street.
Yep.
Was that yep that we talked about it, or yep that?
Yeah, we talked about conditioning.
And where in the draft is that? So, I did want to talk about that a little bit.
Go ahead.
And what I've done is just refresh my recollection of the Mass DOT project. And it is clear that at least the last time they briefed, they are making substantial modifications to three of the four quadrants of the intersection between Andover Elm and 114, right, right in front of the college.
Okay. Yep.
The only one that is not having any alterations is the Elm Street interface. And in looking at the peer review comments, the last time we were engaged with Mass DOT on that, it's pretty clear that the reason for that is lack of sufficient right-of-way, not because there isn't a need. And so, that's sort of factor one. You know, we talked at the last meeting about, it's certainly in Merrimack's interest to avoid the backups there and willingness to engage with Mass DOT. What it would come down to is they have a portion of the right-of-way needed, but not all of it, and that would be up to Merrimack to contribute that. So, that's sort of factor one. Factor two is the question of having this number of dorms immediately adjacent to that main entrance, adding to some of the entering, exiting, not so much with the commuting, but sort of pickups and deliveries. So, we talked about that a little bit. My sense is that will be a contribution. It's already bad, so it's certainly not going to make it better. So, at least in my mind, there's a tie to this project. And then the last third point is, Mass DOT is presenting at a public hearing at Merrimack on December 7th.
Two days.
Days from now.
Yeah, two days, yes. Sorry, forgot it was Tuesday, not Wednesday.
So, I would have preferred to have had a chance to hear that latest presentation and perhaps any contribution that Merrimack might make at that public hearing. I don't quite know how to reconcile the dates here and whether or not we can, but were it to be possible to sequence it so that we have a chance to observe and listen to those discussions on the 7th and then act on this, that would be my preference, but I, I need some help and guidance here. And whether or not the board would agree with?
Yeah, I mean, just maybe a little bit of context is that the, this 114 project is a once-in-a-generation, it's once in like 30-odd years, we're going to get a good chance to take a crack at this. What is not clear to me is that, under the current plans, if we build the dorms on the Elm Street side of the property, within 30 feet of the property line, does that completely preclude the ability to make those improvements on that piece of roadway? Whereas I think with the other pieces, we've pretty much been able to determine that you can build them 30 feet, I mean, whether you should or not is a different story, but you can build them with 30 feet, it's not going to impact the project. But it seems to me that if we approve this as-is without understanding what the state wants to do on the Elm Street side, we may have precluded forever the ability to make any changes in, in the roadway of that area. So, that's, that's really my concern. I mean, I understand the condition, the condition just feels to me to be a little soft.
Yeah. And I forgot to mention one other sort of data point for the board. Gene has provided with the package for all of these hearings on this topic, a summary of the limited site plan review where the board can apply reasonable regulations under this application, which is not like all others. There's eight of them, and item number two, and I'll read just a short piece of it, that, that is included under the limited review is relating to convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site, location of driveway openings in relation to traffic or to adjacent streets. So, that does give us a connection on this topic under the limited review that we're subject to, at least in my view.
But, under this project, the driveways aren't, the driveways aren't changing, right? It's all internal. I mean, I, I think traffic is a connection, but at the same time, the driveway entrances aren't changing. John, your point is interesting about whether or not, right, on the Elm Street side, what impact this might have, if any, on Mass DOT. One of the things I, I not worry, but I think about when we talk about it is, one of the things that happened at Royal Crest is we said, okay, we're going to build Royal, you know, there's this proposal for Royal Crest, all this stuff's going to happen, how's that going to impact your 114 project? And the state said, we're not even going to think about it because it's not permitted yet. So, e, even if we wait and find out what they're going to do, I'm not sure, one, we'd get an answer based on their timeline, but two, if this project doesn't exist, I'm not sure they even consider.
Well, so, okay.
Just, just, that, I don't know, I'm just saying, based on Royal Crest, when they said they wouldn't even think about it.
I mean, just in terms of timing, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I've told this a little bit, isn't, isn't DOT like 75% through their design right now? So, like, it's pretty much there at the moment, right?
This would not require a change on the actual 114 corridor. It would require, it would provide an option to now add to that the extra lane on Elm Street. So, it's not like they'd have to change something they've already planned in that intersection. Three of the four sides have changes that would not be affected by this. It's just the fourth side, which, based on the, you know, the peer reviews, the only reason they weren't doing it is because they couldn't solve the right-of-way problem. And to your point, Aton, I would just offer that, well, two points. First, I clearly remember DOT telling us they, they would never include in their plan an unpermitted project. But I also heard many months later, DOT, Mass DOT, saying that they had incorporated Royal Crest into their plan. So, I, I'm pretty disturbed by that contradiction, but I would just note that. And the other thing is, even to your point, before we act on this, is it helpful to us to know whether or not that 30 feet precludes anything in the future or not? Right now, we're in a position of voting, not knowing if there's this, to John's point, this sort of impact of the project on any potential improvements to that, that section of road.
And why do we think there would be?
Because if the setback to the building would not allow Merrimack to give any of that right-of-way to contribute, isn't that your point?
I mean, that's fundamental, yeah.
But it would likely be an easement.
Which would do is, I mean, whether it's a taking or some other way to do it.
Or an easement.
An easement.
You, you still, but the point ends up being is, if you construct it at 30 feet, and then we decide later, oh, wish we had some extra space there to do this, maybe we should have moved the building back five feet or something like that.
Wish, wish we had done 35 feet, and then there could have been adequate right-of-way.
Yeah.
And it's a generational project.
Yeah.
So, we're locking this in, and we don't know.
But I thought, I thought we can only operate on, from the knowledge that we have, based on the property lines that we have today, right, not what it could be, right?
But I don't think that's the question. The question is, if adequate right-of-way were provided, could that be done within the 30 feet that currently exists? That's just a factual question we don't have the answer to.
True.
But Peter, if an easement's provided, it doesn't change the property line. The 30 feet doesn't get impacted.
Does that answer your question, John?
No, but the, but the problem, the problem ends up being is that if you did do that, if, if you did push hard, as the state did push hard for that additional space, would you have built, the building that close to the property line, would you have put it back a little bit? I mean, I think this is a question of where prudent, complete planning trumps the narrow scope of what we have in front of us. I mean, because it's an entirely legitimate question to ask.
Remind me again, do you guys need a highway access permit for this, or?
Yes.
I mean.
Can I, can I weigh in just for a second?
So. I mean, it's an interesting discussion.
Yeah, it is, it is. So, I, so, um, so I just want to go back to the conversation last week.
Yes.
And, and then where, where I thought the go-forward was. So, last week, my memory is that you started the conversation with, is there ever going to be a point where the Elm Street entrance is not the Elm Street entrance? I misinterpreted your question and said, well, on the Mass DOT project, they will have a new entrance on 114. And you're, and you said, my memory is, you said, no, I'm talking about, would it ever move back to Rock Ridge, for example, providing more space?
That's actually where I started my question.
Yes, right, that, that's exactly right. And my, my response in my head was, we do that on occasion, big events, things like that already.
Yep.
It's in Andover, so I don't want to get ahead of myself at a different municipality. We do, we own in, on both sides, all but, I think, two properties now. So, I didn't want to get into the whole, Rock Ridge could be a solution, without understanding where you were going. Then we had the whole conversation about, is there another turn lane? I think we then looked at a map, and there was a bike lane in the middle of that, and, and so, my statement, and it's the same statement I've gone back and confirmed on the campus, is, my understanding of the conversation was this. Is the institution, has the institution tried to put the third lane in, or the turn lane in? The answer to my question to that was, yes, I have personally attempted to do that on several occasions, one. Two, if you were to build this, would you be, in essence, the place where you're concerned about is, the college would then say, it's too late now, everybody, like, we're, we don't want to be 27 feet from the road, we wanted to be 30, or whatever the increment was. And my statement last week, and remains the same today, is, I don't think that the institution, I can't know for sure because I don't have it all designed, and, but my belief is, is that because we've tried to get it in the past, we would have to figure out how to make it work, right? So, to, to John's point, I don't want to be in a situation where we're either A, sitting here and saying, we don't know what they're going to do, and by the way, when I say, we don't know, there is a slightly more elevated understanding of that because the very people who are doing our traffic work are the same very people who are doing the Mass DOT project. It's the same consulting group doing the same work. So, this is not like, I'm not standing here, I can't stand here and speak for Mass DOT, but I'm not standing here as a citizen who just happens to go to a few community meetings and not know much else. So, let's say the building is built, and we come back to a situation where it becomes clear that a turn lane is more necessary than ever before. For whatever reason, something's developed at Royal Crest, or at Bertucci's, or whatever. I don't see anything here that precludes or defines definitively that the institution is saying, or would say, that with 100% assurance, we would cast away that discussion simply because the building is where it is situated. If I knew and Mass DOT had at 75% drawings, something that was there, to John's point, we probably wouldn't have done it where it is, but to go and adjust it, or to wait, I mean, they've been at this for, they were already designing this before we even got going on Royal Crest, so this is like two years in. For us to wait two years, or a year and a half for this, when I'm already stating the fact that I believe the college would figure out a way to work with Mass DOT to help something that would be beneficial to everybody, is where I came away. And my report on campus the next day after the meeting was, this is pretty much the commitment I made publicly at the meeting, so, and I'm standing here still, so I would, you take that for what that's worth as well.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Just one comment, I, I don't think anybody's asking you to wait a year and a half or two years. I mean, what I actually asked for was two days to hear what Mass DOT is going to say, but.
I, I will, I will tell you right now, Mass DOT is not going to walk into that room and comment at this point on anything about adding something that they have already not added.
Well, for example, I could ask at the meeting, theoretically, would you still be able to add an additional turning lane if with Merrimack College, you could solve your right-of-way width problem?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not committing Merrimack College, but I can ask that question, and I think they would give us more information than we have now.
And if they said yes, what would you take from that?
Come back to the board and say, here's what they said. So, now we know more than before.
So, I want to walk, I guess I want to walk through the couple of different answers. One, I don't, I mean, I guess we can't know until you go to the meeting and ask, but my experience with DOT is they'll say, I don't know, we'll have to look at it.
I think that's certainly possible.
But let's say they say, no, we'd still be able to do it, so fine, we have that answer.
Yeah.
If they, or yes, we'd be able to do it.
Yeah.
If they say, no, we couldn't build the lane there, let's assume that's the answer, what does that answer then provide for us? Because as of today, based on all the data that it seems that we have and what Mass DOT is saying, it's not needed.
No. The peer review reports and Mass DOT did not say the extra lane is not needed. What they said was, they couldn't do anything because they didn't have sufficient right-of-way because the other.
But does it actually say that it's needed? Just not whether they can or can't do it, that it's actually needed.
To clarify, the peer review was based on Royal Crest's proposal and the traffic impact generated from that proposal, not from the two dorms presented here. So, so the peer review was for a different project.
Okay, right. So, under.
But there's nothing there that said it was not needed.
But there's nothing that says it's needed either, that I've seen currently.
No, but from a prudent perspective of planning.
I, so, yes, I, right.
I think it's fair to ask them that question before we make our commitment for something that we can't turn back on, that I think is Peter's point.
Yes.
If they come back with a, you know, oblique, indirect answer, or refuse to answer the question, then it's like, okay, no harm, no foul, we asked. But I think not to ask the question now is, is a mistake, because what if they turn around and say, you know something, we really think that's something we'd like to consider doing or evaluate doing, not sure exactly how, but definitely it's well worth it, that says we need to have some little level of flexibility on the ground, I think, in terms of that, whether it, and I think it impacts you guys, too, is if they came back and said that.
And, and I think what the board could then do is, look, if, 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 if they say, other than no, under no condition are we interested, we can then say, will the building as proposed allow that additional right-of-way? That's the question. And if the answer is, yes, it would allow it, and, you know, there's a number of ways to get there, or if the answer is, once those buildings go up, it doesn't matter who wants it, you do not have room for that right-of-way. That's the question that we should, I mean, we could still say, okay, we're, we're going to proceed anyway, but we would then have the full planning information of the impact on this question before we lock in place a generational change.
Yeah. Okay. I, I mean, I think it's so, I mean, I'm not sure how you could answer that question. I, I mean, what if they increased the size of the lanes on the other side of the street?
They can't because the slope, the road, the slope drops down.
Right. But I mean, there are things that could change, I mean, again, I, I, okay, I mean, I think it's, I think, to me, it's a little too hypothetical, but.
This, this is why I wanted to come back to with what my walkaway was. My walkaway wasn't that we would need to know, because I think we could all agree, no official from Mass DOT is going to stand there and give any answer that's going to be, that's going to help in this decision. It may make it more opaque, but I don't think it's going to help if that's what we're trying to protect against. I thought we were walking away with was, if there is this once-in-generational moment, right, we need, we need, we, the board, want to make sure that Merrimack isn't going to stand there and say, wait a second, we don't want a road that would have been 39 feet away, now suddenly 29 feet away, and therefore, we do not accept this. That was my takeaway.
No, I, I mean, I, I get John, the way, what you guys are saying, and that, the question of, you know, once you approve the building and it's 30 feet away, and if that precludes something in the future, from a planning perspective, that's just not a good idea. I'm just struggling with whether or not any answer we get would fairly be relative to this, to what we can and can't approve.
It's a good question, yeah.
And, and that's what I'm struggling with, just thinking, trying to think that through of whether or not, let's say, they say, no, we couldn't do it, I'm not, to me, I'm not sure that that changes what we can and can't do here.
But if you look at it as the margin, what we're talking about is asking the question Wednesday, coming back in the next meeting with the thumbs up, thumbs down, whereas if you just pass it through now, and it turns out that maybe they are serious about it, we, we box ourselves into a corner.
So, that's a good suggestion. Yeah. The time extension to render its decision was signed to the 15th, I believe, I want to double-check. So, potentially, you could add another meeting after Thursday night, so if everyone is available next Tuesday, we could add another one and still file the decision on time.
Or we could just get an extension for another week.
Again, I, I would just humbly say, I think the likelihood you're going to go to a meeting and get someone from Mass DOT to say something that is going to fundamentally change our world is slim.
Well, let's.
Nor, nor do, I'm sorry, nor do I think that it is likely that this, let's say they say no, and we build the building, and 10 years from now, because of everything else that's being developed in the area, it is necessary, we're right back to the same place, right? I'd rather, I, I would rather be able to stick to the, to the principle that the institution wants it, has tried to get it, and isn't going to sit here and say, I mean, yes, if they want it two feet from the building, sure, I'm going to have an issue with that. But at the end of the day, our comfort level is, is that whether they make this decision on the 7th, or they make it a year from now, we feel like it's an important thing that has to be added, and we, we don't want to be perceived as the entity that is trying to stop that.
I don't, I, I don't think this is a issue of, I don't think it's a Merrimack issue or an issue of cooperation. I think, I think what it boils down to me is, is are we committing ourselves to something, to a project that could then have implications that we don't see right now, and can we get more information about that in the next few days? I think that is the crux of it. I don't think it's a whether or not, what Merrimack's going to do or not going to do issue. So, okay, got it. Let's discuss where we're at right now and what, so, your preference would be to try to get that information, ask the question, see what they say, and vote on this based on that information, correct?
And I recognize that there's no guarantee that we're going to get the answer that we would like to have.
Right.
From Mass DOT in a public meeting setting. I, I understand that.
Okay.
And I agree, Jeff, that it's pretty slim.
Okay. Is that your preference as well?
Yeah.
Okay. My preference would be to vote on it, I don't, to me, it's, it's not enough, I don't really see it changing anything, but let's, Sean, what's your?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I just don't, I don't think we're going to get any clear answer from Mass DOT, and I think it's going to be, like, we might get a little bit of information, but it's not going to be information that's going to really kind of drive a different decision on this project.
Okay. So, we got, John?
Yeah, I feel similarly. I, I just don't think.
Similarly to what?
Similarly to Sean. I don't think that we are going to get a whole lot from Mass DOT. I guess, I'm not opposed to waiting, to me, it doesn't make that much of a difference, but I would say, like, my, my thought is, when we come back here again to talk about this, if we do hold off, if, we're probably going to be in the same place. We're probably going to be still saying, well, you know, at some point in the future, might there be a need, right, there be a lane here? Would there be the possibility, based on the plans that, you know, the applicant has proposed, to, to adding that lane? I don't think that they're, right, like, you know, this is a pretty, you know, there's a pretty good amount of space that you could do that, right? Like, I don't know that this would be, you know, I don't think that there's anything here that's like a red flag of, you know, in 20 years, if they want to add a lane, you know, they absolutely would not be able to do that either.
That scenario 10 or 20 years out, to me, is different than what we're talking, what I'm talking about. So, I, I agree with what you're saying with the 10 to 20 years out. What I'm trying to articulate is now.
Gene, can I ask a procedural question? If we vote, and we vote tonight, and we approve it, what then happens? Like, in terms of the actual filing of the decision and?
So, I'll still file it with the clerk's office.
Yeah.
If, one of the conditions is to have it recorded, so they have to.
Is there a timeframe where you have to file it?
There's not.
So, you have to file it 15 days.
It's not a special permit, so, I don't think, their counsel is here, but I don't think there's a hard filing time.
Sure.
It's 14, it's 14 days.
Nothing has to get filed from within 15 days.
It's 14 days for a special permit. It's 14 days. For a plan approval, often, it's 90 days, so, in the time.
I think we have a potential other view.
I mean, I think it's an extension to act to a certain period of time, you need to file the decision by that time.
Oh, that, that's true. So, that was the concern about why we needed to extend it till December 15th, because I have to have time to file the decision. Within, this bylaw is within 90 days of the application being filed, and so.
Right. Well, there's, there's time to render a decision, and then there's a separate clock that I think tells about how soon you have to file the decision.
Either way, even if it's.
Not in this case.
Even if it's 15 days, I guess what I was thinking was, even if we decided tonight, and we instructed the planner not to file anything until after this Thursday meeting, and if something comes up, we could entertain a motion to reconsider or somehow otherwise address it, rather than pausing the clock and going, it just, it's, it seems like there's a, let's just say, a large percentage chance that we're not going to get an answer that does anything, then we don't need to come back. But if we do, could we?
That may be, can you actually unwind a decision without noticing it?
Well, that, that's, that's what I'm trying to think of the procedures. If we close the public hearing.
I guess, partly my thinking on this thing is, like it or not, most people tend to know about this, even though it's been publicized, and anybody that wants to know will know about it. And once this thing gets built, there are going to be a lot of people who are going to be upset about it. I'm sorry, there will be, I, I know there will be. And, yeah, maybe it's a relatively small percentage of people, but there'll be some vocal, how did you let this happen? And partly, I want to make sure is that we can say people and look at people and say, we have addressed every significant planning issue that we can related to this project. we have addressed every significant planning issue that we can related to this project, and I think this is a legitimate one. And I think we've already stated the caveats that, yeah, they're probably not going to come back with anything explicit, but we, I think it's our obligation to ask D O T that, and if they can give us any direction, that if they came back and said, look, we don't have any plans for that, but we absolutely want to reserve the right to do that in the future, that makes a difference. Will they say that? Maybe not, probably not, but I think we have to ask before we make a decision.
Is, is, is everyone available for next Tuesday?
To clarify, John, the bylaw is up here. It's 90 days from the filing of the application, which would have been November 15th, which they've extended to December 15th.
That's for filing the decision?
Filing the decision.
Okay, for file.
Right there, 8.21, within 90 days of date, of the receipt of the application.
Okay. Is, is everyone available for a meeting next Tuesday?
I'm not.
You're not? No, no, it's the 12th.
Oh, sorry.
Of course, I mean, it really can be anytime next week. Well, when's the, when do we have to make a decision by, file it by?
The 15th.
I'm not sure if I'll be in town or not.
Okay.
But couldn't I call it?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I think we can still look at what's in the decision other than that point, and we can be ready, you know, to do it pretty quickly.
You know, Jeff, did you have something else?
No, no, I'm listening.
Because maybe an alternative is, is there something we can do with the wording and the condition that, because right now, we have three members saying, you know, preferences not to pause, we have two members saying, you know, we think we could pause for two days and, and complete our due diligence on a project that, once it starts, is going to be controversial, and, and it's for everybody who has to wait multiple cycles on that short section of Elm Street, the obvious question will be, was anything done about adding a lane before you approved this?
Okay. What kind of, do you have...
I, I, I am struggling with, it's not my preferred approach. I'm just saying, does anybody have any ideas with respect to how 15 is worded that would also be acceptable to the applicant to...
Well, we also have, so again, they do have to get a highway access permit, so that will address some of, some of these issues will come up as part of the, even the highway access project. Do, I'm sure we have that they have to get a, oh, permit. Okay. So, um, the, the difficulty is, I think that the issue is not necessarily with Meramec, but it's with the state.
Well, I, I'm viewing it a little differently than that.
Okay, go ahead.
Clearly, it's going to be the state that decides to do this, because they're responsible for that section of Elm Street. However, if the state has or is making a decision based on their understanding that the portion of right of, additional right of way that is needed from Meramec is in the too hard to do box, then that's an action or a reaction by Meramec that could address this problem, even though it will remain D O T's decision.
So then, I mean, would they need to provide their plans or their, you know, this decision and their plans to D O T to be considered as part of the 114 project? Thinking out loud, what they, what they could do to make sure that the, these issues are not forgotten about and are somehow addressed. Jeff, did you have something to do on?
I can hop in on that.
Yeah?
Just, um, this, the, the approved plans is part of this process, the zoning board decision and this planning board decision are, will all be incorporated in that application package for the access permit that does get submitted to D O T.
If I could, I just, I would like to just say this. The, we've just gone through a very lengthy process of designing this with the same transportation, civil engineers that the state is using. If we thought that there was a legitimate chance that this was going to be going through, right, we would have moved it. We, so this is where we are today, believing that it's not. Let's say we go to the meeting, and they leave it either wishy-washy, which to me is the worst, or they actually say, no, actually, we think, we've been secretly holding this piece of information, and we actually really think now that it's been exposed, we want to do it. They're going to need months to design that, so then we can spend months after that figuring out what our design change would be, because I would agree, if we come back in here and say, this is where everyone sits, right, we would want to move it, just like we wouldn't put it where it was if we thought this was a viable alternative.
So, so what, let's say it gets approved now, what's the timeframe for billing?
What's the timeframe?
What's the timeframe for actually working on this project?
We'd like to break ground in the summer, because I've got to have it open by the fall of '26, or there's no project.
Okay. So what happens over the winter and in the spring?
We're going through the MAST D O T process, bonding, things of that nature.
Okay. So, what about something of, along the lines of, so it needs to be done prior to construction, right? Right? That's the, so some sort of condition about prior to construction, Meramec will consult with D O T to see if there are any needs or plans for a bypass or shoulder lane before construction, because if they then go and say, hey...
I think it's more than C. It's, 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 you know, what we have in here already is, shall continue to be an advocate for and offer its assistance. What we could add with the same language is, prior to construction, shall meet with MAST O T, D O T, with the same language.
Yeah.
Advocate for and offer its assistance in additional lane, and then add prior to start of, or, you know...
If you just move it to the section prior to site work or build improvement, there's a section for that.
What do you, what do you think about that?
Yeah, no, I think that's actually a good idea, because, I mean, our, I think, at least from my perspective, the concern is, if they came back and said, you know, something, this is really something we may want to consider, that's relevant information for all the parties involved in this.
Yes, it is.
And if we do it before construction, then you can act accordingly if, if it turns out that what they're contemplating is, is pretty severe. And that's all we really want, is that we don't box ourselves into a corner and leave our...
Jeff, you, you may not agree with this. I think we are trying to help Meramec College in this discussion.
No, no, I, I actually, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I actually think we are all in alignment on what we're trying to achieve. I, my simple solution was, what I came away with from the last meeting was, what we don't want is for Meramec to be, to be the, the prohibitor, because we are the entity that's holding the land, right? And, and I felt very comfortable with that being the parameters that we're, that we're at. A good, good conversation about what are other concerns as those fit in. I think for us, the most important thing is, is not to lose time, so I actually think to, as John just laid it out, I think is right. If there is a way to, if there is a way to avoid the scenario where, where it is perceived on the institution or this board that we have precluded the opportunity to do something that I think we would all universally agree would be in the public's best interest, shame on all of us for doing that. What I don't want to do is create the dynamic by which, in order to achieve some level of comfort, we've literally lost what, the little amount of time that makes the big difference on the entire project. And so, if it's construction-based, that's fine, because that actually pushes us also to push and drive with you to get an answer as fast as possible, because knowing in June isn't any help to us anymore. I'd rather know right away, which is why, when we had a conversation at the previous meeting and then with Gene, the advocate word was us, because that's what we feel we were asked to do, and that's what we've been doing.
Okay. So, if we take condition 15, and we move it to prior to the issuance of site work, well, let's, I don't want to do it site work, but I want to do it prior to construction, I think is...
Building permit or construction? Create a new category?
Yeah, just, I want them to be able, I don't want it to do it before site work. I want them to, I don't think they should have to wait on site work, right, if they want to lay utilities and stuff like that. But prior to...
Well, utilities might impact the actual lane.
It might, but I get, but I'd let them take that risk, right? I mean, I, I don't want to interrupt the timeline. I'd rather, I think, construction, I'd say that's prior to construction. Prior to, so, I want to keep it, so, okay, we can move it there. So, prior to construction, the owner shall, will keep, shall meet with D O T to discuss the need and ability of an additional travel lane, and shall continue and then keep the rest.
Well, do we want to wrap in something related to, like, get the guidance recommendation preference of D O T? I mean...
To the extent they can, I mean...
To the extent, I, I mean, I understand where Jeff's going, is, you can get it as analysis paralysis mode, it takes forever to never make a decision, and that's not what we're talking about here. I think it's just a quick call, if, if they're definitely moving down that path, then we want to know about, everybody wants to know about, to make a better decision.
And Jeff, part of what's driving me is, if you go back to their presentation, which is from last spring.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's previous.
Yeah.
Here's the four roads, changes in three, except this one.
Mm-hmm.
And then you look at the peer reviews, it's because right of way problem.
Yeah, like, we, we are all unified, we, we're, we're in violent agreement on, on the, missing the opportunity would be too great, I think.
So, is this language, meet everybody's...
Well, well, we can, we can, we can, can you just add something about seeking guidance as to, seeking guidance as to D O T's preferences and, and current status?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a, just a slight...
We're going to, we're, yeah, go ahead. We're not, we're not going to finalize it?
No, 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 I get it, but just a slight alteration. I, there is, despite what was in the notes, right, and this is just Jeff dogged opining for a moment, so please, when we looked at the, the design on the screen at the prior meeting here for this project, right, one of the things that jumped out, I think, I don't know if anyone mentioned it in the meeting, but I know it's come up for those that have watched, is, is what's really precluding the ability to put in the lane is also the square feet that's being taken up by the bike lane. And so, what I would like to be able to do is just note, not about a bike lane, but just note that there is certainly, this is all predicated on the idea that this project might have an impact on that lane. It might be the case that MAST D O T can add the lane and has no impact on this project or our thinking whatsoever. I just would like to make sure that there is, no pun intended, an off-ramp here, where that if MAST D O T is like, well, if everyone really feels so strongly this should be a turn lane, we can actually do that, and it doesn't actually impact your project at all, that we just keep moving forward, right, and dual tracking. Like, I don't, I don't want to have to be in a place where, where we're waiting for them for months, if it does come up to the point where they're, as John said, they really do see that as a value, in part because we've all weighed in and advocated for it, but they don't see that it's going to have an, an impact on, on the land of Meramec, and so we don't actually need to be waiting for the, to adjust the project, if that makes sense.
Well, they might want to put the bike lane in.
But they, there are, so, so here's the weird part.
They may just want to put trees in there to say the walk...
They're already putting the bike path on 114, on the, what do they call it? The shared use path, yeah. Right? Like, they could actually do that on the sidewalk and not in the middle of the roadway, you know what I mean? Like, I, I, I'm not an engineer. Everyone behind me is now freaking out, because I'm trying to design one from the podium, that's a bad idea. All, all I'm saying is, is that this whole conversation, rightfully so, is, is this project negating something that we will all suffer the consequences of as citizens? One. And two, can we break, can we, can we have language in there, I don't know what that looks like, that says, it might be the case that MAST D O T wants to do it, it doesn't impact the project?
So, okay, but I, I don't know that we need, because if, if they decide they're going to do it, it obviates the concern that we have, and so if you're saying, well, do we have to then meet with them to talk about an advocate, if we're, no, if you feel that you need to modify the permit language because they're already doing it, we can, we can, we can take that up. I mean, because, great, all our problems...
Well, I, I guess where I'm going, and in full transparency, again, thinking from the podium here is, if MAST D O T were to state as a fact that they wanted to do it...
Yeah.
But they were unsure whether they could, whether they would need Meramec's land, I would advocate to the hilt that they get that project moving as fast as possible, but not necessarily that they have to use Meramec's land. That's where I'm differentiating. If they're like, there is absolutely no way this can go in without Meramec's help, that's a different matter.
But that's the only part that interests us.
Absolutely. I totally agree with you, as us as well.
If they don't need Meramec, then that's not on our plate.
And I, we are in complete agreement.
Okay.
So, do we have revised wording?
I think it'll need to be ironed out, but what it's going to entail is that they'll continue to advocate for, continue to advocate for and offer assistance in adding an additional lane, and over at Elm Street, that before construction, they will meet with D O T to make that, as part of that advocacy, and also get guidance at that time about, is this something that D O T would be looking to move forward with, and what are D O T's current plans before putting shovel and ground?
Yeah. I mean, if, if D O T decides to add another lane, do we want to give an option for a modification of the plan?
Well, that's always, that's all, I don't...
That's probably how you'd have to do it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Which I think that that would be appropriate.
I think that what I'm trying to have is, there has to be a condition that we can meet.
Yeah?
Okay, so there's no confusion.
To the podium.
Come, come up to the podium. Sure.
Randy, Randy?
Can you just introduce yourself?
So, Mark Johnson, Councilman of Meramec College. There has to be a condition as written that we can meet.
Yeah.
Whether it means we meet and then provide to the planning department an, an update or something, because we've got to be able to go forward with construction plans and, and move this along, and, and not be in a position, you know, that we're not, we have to come back for a modification, you know, while we're going, while we're going forward with the project.
Yep. So, I, I, I mean, I think, so, we, you don't, I, as I, as I understood it, there was no kind of objections to the language as it stood coming into today.
Correct.
So, the only thing we're adding is that you really have to meet with D O T and get their feedback.
Correct. And I'm fine with that.
Right. And I think that's it.
And provide us the feedback.
And provide, and provide, right.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, if that feedback then said, you know, oh, no, if those buildings are there, this is going to be a problem, yeah, we'd probably call you back and we'd discuss it. I don't know that that would change anything, but we'd have to have that discussion before you put shovels to ground, and that's why we're doing it prior to construction. And it doesn't have to be the day before, right? It would be during the highway access permit meetings and/or two months before. I mean, it would all be beforehand, and then provide that feedback, and that covers the concerns, and now we've, and I think having that conversation outside the public meeting will probably get us better answers.
I, I feel that the language in there covers all of that, but if we want to spell it out more, I have no trouble with that either. I think it's consistent with where, where we are.
Okay. Good.
One more thought.
Go for it.
Should the board consider an additional statement elsewhere in the decision that is simply saying words to the effect of, nothing in this decision is intended to preclude MAST D O T from adding an additional lane if they so decide?
Um, I mean, obviously, we can't, if they so decide, we have no authority over them.
Maybe the wording's not quite right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to say, what I'm trying to say is, this was considered, and it is not intended to preclude those actions by MAST D O T. You know, John's boxing at end point.
Can I, can I, can I make an offer to this? Because I think I...
As long as it doesn't interrupt his thinking.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I don't think we need to talk, cut it.
If number 15 could somehow utilize some language such as the, the owner, the owner partners with, joins the town in, something, something to that point, Peter, that it's, it's not, it's not us, it's not the town, it is, it is both. I get that it gets awkward the further into the language you go, but I don't know if you need a whole section on that. It may just be as simple as stating, seeing we are in, in agreement here, right, simply to say... Simply to say, the town of North, or the planning board, however, I don't know how you guys do that, but, right? And Merrimack agree that this is an important planning principle. Thus, the owner shall continue to. The college was advised by the planning board that this is an important principle and therefore.
Okay. I don't, what, so, shouldn't be part of the conditions, because the conditions are in you, not on the town. But.
The finding of fact?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That a finding of fact that the continued discussion, evaluation and advocacy of the town and the owner and DOT for additional lane is of a benefit and will be, will continue to be examined in the future. So that.
Yeah, you could probably add it to the, the seventh point on the findings of fact, so there speaks to MassDOT 114.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be a good place for it. Did you grab that, Jean?
Add the advocacy to number seven.
So, in finding of fact.
Yep.
Number seven.
Yep.
Says it has entered the plan, DOT will result in replacing the existing Hawklight, Ponca, try to, okay. So, let's add another one right after that, since we're just talking, it's not exactly, but that the continued discussion, evaluation and advocacy for a, for an additional turn lane on Elm Street between, I'm sorry, the continued advocacy and all those other verbs I just used, between the town, the owner and DOT will be ongoing and is seen as a benefit to the community as a whole. So, basically, we're finding that although we're making this decision in the static moment and there is not a plan for our turn lane based on the peer review and based on, you know, our expertise and the, and what we've heard from Merrimack, that we all think that it's potentially a good idea if it can be accomplished, that we should, and then we all anticipate continuing to discuss that and that doing what we can to make it come to fruition.
Well, I really like that approach. I like it in findings of fact. I like it in number seven. And I like it in addition to the additions we've made in number 15. And with all that said, I'm happy to move ahead if the board accepts those changes.
Okay, okay.
Hey, Jean, just one drafty point related to that. We've, we've been talking a lot Elm Street, but I think it's technically Andover Street.
Okay. Elm Street slash Andover Street?
Yeah, probably Andover Street slash Elm Street.
Okay. Okay.
So, I, I, are we?
Yeah, good with that.
Okay, so, I have one other comment on the decision. So, given the amount of impervious service and the gravity of this project, do we think a $40,000 bond is sufficient?
Jean, projects of similar size and scope, 40,000 is that?
Knowing that we know the drainage issues and.
So, Princeton Properties in the commercial component that was in the front, two different applicants, they were both 40,000. There wasn't more of a difficult stormwater management system than those two. I just go by gut of similar scope type projects, so 40.
I mean, I'm, I'm less concerned here because this is a case where there's mutual interest. I mean, because if you had a disaster in your hands, that would be a bigger problem.
Yes, yes.
Then the town problem would be your problem hugely.
Amazon was 80 and the redevelopment of 1600 was 30. So, it's, to put it in perspective.
Yeah, I take it so, but I think you're pretty well taken.
And I'm glad, looking at it, okay.
Jean, the one question I had is, remember the last time we talked about doing a look back after the project's completed, parking?
On parking?
Yeah, really, so, to make sure that there is building this, it does cause a parking problem.
They can do, they can update the parking monitor. It was from 2019.
No, 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 but remember like what we did with, you know, with the Starbucks?
Yep.
Remember we said, let's do a look back after a year, after two years? I thought we discussed at the last meeting, we'd do the same thing here, is we'll do a look back with the traffic a year or two years after to make sure there's not a traffic problem.
So, traffic or parking?
Parking, I should say. There's more parking than traffic, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, what was discussed was traffic, and I didn't know how we would do that, given there's not a specific traffic study, but we could certainly do it in the parking.
Let's do parking, but when, when did you say the last?
2019 was the monitoring report provided with the application.
Yep.
And since then, we got an update that they've added, if I remember right, 426 parking spaces to the project since 2019. And so, we can update that monitoring project to see what's the usage versus the availability.
Right. And, and my, my only hesitancy is there's going to be other stuff that's going to happen on campus in the interim, I'm sure. When did you say you planned, wanted to open for?
Fall '26.
So, it doesn't make sense to do it anytime before that?
No, no, you would, you would. Yeah, I'm thinking like, you know, six to nine months after.
So, fall '27?
We usually do it from the certificate of occupancy, either six months or a year from that.
Yeah, okay.
From this. And we did that for 510 and 530 Turnpike Street.
Yep.
They were just in a few months ago to report on that one, so we're very similar.
So, let's do it for that, but let's, let's, let's actually, but I'd rather set a date because I want, if, I don't want it to be in the summer, you know? I want it to be in a time when you're, you're actually going to have people on campus. And if that date doesn't make sense, just kind of tell us the date. So, let's, let's put a date of, let's do October 15th, 2027.
Something like that, at the middle of the fall, yeah.
October 15th, 2027, and take the same parking, just an updated parking.
Monitoring study?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Do you have anything, Rue? Good. Okay. Any other public comments based on the discussion that we had? All right, that was a really good thoughtful discussion. Can we get a motion to close the public hearing? Second. All in favor? Aye. All right, does anyone need any additional time to review the decision?
Well, just we doubt that condition 16 speaks to the shading, so as long as you're satisfied with that. Condition 21 is slightly different than what we've used for construction monitors, but it's, but it's exactly what we used for CrossPoint, which developed the Starbucks, Chase Bank and Convenient MD. So, essentially, it puts a construction monitor in place twice a month. It's in a really, I'm going to be by it all the time as well, so.
Be hard to miss.
Yeah, I'm not concerned.
I'll also note that we did put in the limited site plan findings, A through H, which is great that we have in our first decision of this nature. Okay?
And again, to speak to the screening and kind of to speak to Jean's, Jean's concern, article, I'm sorry, condition 34 speaks to, planning staff can review the site, and if any additional screening is necessary, it'll be at the owner's expense. But we've had that in many decisions. It's never really come into play, but we have it here.
What's the process, ATOG, to review the changes to the text in seven and 15?
So, what we normally do is we approve the, prove as amended, and then usually Jean forwards it to me and I review it to make sure it corresponds with the discussions that we have. If somebody else wants to review it, she can send it to all of us, but we can't have a discussion about it. So, you, if you do want to see it beforehand, she can send it to you and you can make a comment directly to Jean.
So, not to preclude the process between Jean and you, but in addition to that, yes, I would like to see it and I will respond only to Jean.
Okay, good.
So, my concern is serial communication, so he's going to respond to me and I'm going to respond to you. Like, if, if I send something to each one of you and then I get individual.
But that's not a quorum.
I understand. But I might get them from people addition to you.
So, here's, here's, so here's what I would suggest, so we don't have a discussion about it. After tonight, you send it to BCC, to everyone on the board. Everyone can respond individually to you about if there's anything that they think doesn't jive with what we just discussed. You can put together that final thing and send it to me to, to review. Just if there, if there are multiple comments, just put them in and then you and I can have a discussion about that without discussing amongst everybody else.
Okay.
Okay? But thank you for raising that. I don't, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but.
I don't think I want to have a comment.
Yes, but we're usually pretty good about that. Okay. All right, can we get a motion to approve the site plan, limited site plan review permit?
So moved and as amended?
As amended, thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much for this process.
Have a great Christmas and holiday.
Thank you.
We'll be back with more details from MassDOT.
Okay. If, if they come in on Thursday and say they're having a turn lane, I'm just. I give up. I give up. Okay, excellent.
I do not need to go to that meeting.
You can, but yeah.
I'm just making sure that I'm clear on that.
Clear, okay. All right, next. 492 Sutton Street Homegrown Lacrosse LLC, application for site plan review and watershed special permit.
Tonight, thank you.
Thank you, council. Ready for your turn?
I think we already had our discussion.
I hope so.
Come on, Brian, we're just warming up. Oh, thank you. We're just warming up. That was the first quarter.
So, just to give you an update since last meeting, a revised stormwater management report and operations and maintenance plan has been submitted to address the town engineer's comments. Specifically, detail has been added to the existing site conditions section describing the existing drainage system to Old Clark Road and Sutton Street. The analysis point of Old Clark Road and Sutton Street has been expanded to include the eventual discharge points from the existing drainage system. The existing system discharges to the wetlands surrounding the lake at multiple points south of the intersection of Osgood and Sutton. Post-development impacts are detailed further in the proposed conditions section, which describes how the stormwater BMPs will decrease volumes and peak flows into the existing system, thus having no adverse impacts on the existing drainage system. Lastly, the language has been added to the own M plan requiring, requiring that the owner slash developer provide the town with inspection reports and receipts if requested. So, John Bojazie has provided a final sign-off from his comments, and a draft decision has been prepared for your review, both the site plan as well as the watershed.
Have any, um, what do we have before us is, which permit?
The site plan.
Site plan, okay. Any public comments come in via email?
No.
Any members of the public wish to make any comments? Don't say. Any board questions or comments? None. I can't imagine there's anything you want to add, Brian?
I guess I would just suggest, for purposes of, of the record, that you, again, confirm, consistent with the last hearing, that, I understand you have, in fact, reviewed the, the hearing that you missed.
Yes, thank you. I did. That is a, that is a good one. Okay. Yes, so I missed the last hearing. I have filed, I did watch the full hearing, discussion about the, how the orientation of the building and how they came to everything. Thank you for taking up the mantle, Peter, on the questions there, which were very informative, and I think everyone did a really nice job on that. I did file a paperwork indicating that I had watched the meeting as well. Thank you, Brian. Perfect. Okay, we motion, get a motion to close the public hearing? Just one public hearing, right?
Second.
It's a book, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's, let's look at the site plan review special permit, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so Jean, I know that we talked about, I'm just trying to find one of the conditions on when they had to discuss with the airport, what, I guess, where did, with respect to flight paths and.
Yep, that's in there.
You just pointed it out.
Number nine is a finding of fact, the project will require airspace review by MassDOT's air and ocean provision and review by the FIA based on its location and elevation.
Do we have any? There's no look back need. We didn't talk about any look back on this.
I don't see any graphics marketing. But I, I do like that we think about it for each one, so.
So, wait, John, you'd raise the concern about maintenance obligations? So, that's both a finding of fact as well as we'll get a copy of the lease?
Yep. Saw that.
As a special condition? And you also had a concern about future uses, so number 16 speaks to the fact that a change of use could in fact trigger another site plan review and a modification to the site plan.
Great, thank you, Jean, for showing and incorporating. Okay, we get a motion to approve the site plan review special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, here's the watershed.
Thanks.
So, I'm going to strike as amended in that first one.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the watershed protection district special permit?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for answering.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
And please tell your colleagues, we appreciate that, the, all the orientation of the building and stormwater questions that they went through. That I think it was an, it was an important question for us to ask and to, to at least discuss.
I, I should mention that Brian Brazil apologized he wasn't able to make it tonight, but I didn't think it was, it was urgent. I should also mention, just for your record, that he was very appreciative of, of board and particularly also of Jean's efforts in, in helping with this, this project, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, MBTA, multifamily housing overlay district draft bylaw. Ooh! That's a bylaw. You know when it smacks like that. Ever have one?
You can get a staple for this.
It's just one, right?
Yep. Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay, I know I provided a bylaw at the last meeting and asked you to review it. Since then, we have Ian Burns and Andrew Shapiro's here tonight. There's been a number of housekeeping type edits, so rather than redline it, because it would have been a lot of redlines, I've just provided a revised draft, and we can go through that tonight. Really not material changes, but tonight I want to talk about some areas that I think need further work and.
All right, let's, let's go for it.
Okay, so, I mean, standard, I put it, we put it in actually a warrant format, and so, the top, you can really ignore it this time, but the reason it's showing is eventually, ultimately will turn into a warrant. Article 19 is the last article of our existing zoning bylaw, and so, that's why it's placed as 19.
18 is our last one currently?
18 is currently, so this would be an addition and would become our last.
Yep.
So, very standard, you know, purpose and intent. Flip through that. Essentially, we're creating a bylaw that allows for multifamily developments by right, and it's through a plan approval process as opposed to special permit, although, as we've discussed, there are some uses that would trigger a special permit.
Can I? Can I just ask a question, just because I'm looking at it, we were just talking breweries earlier?
Yep.
At some, that's a newer definition. At some point, I don't know, we probably don't have time for, for this year, but would it make sense to look for newer projects, newer, newer? would it make sense to look for newer projects, newer, newer terms, newer uses? That have come about to see where in our zoning they would fit and to put them in? Like, there are other places in town where brewery, distillery and winery would fit and I think we just need to sit down and add that to the zoning somewhere.
Definitely. Many, many zoning districts.
Right.
Just trying to keep it a little bit simple and focused, so...
Yeah, no, nothing for this. I, it, it's off topic, but, but just seeing it, there, it should be like, I don't know if you guys, like, keep a list of like new uses that have come up, like, do we have new small industrial technologies, you know, or small cell technologies or some, or, or bio, um, you know, life science stuff?
Yeah. I mean, we didn't have a, a thing a few years ago, remember? It, it works with the outdoor lighting?
Right.
And like, should there be something that triggers?
Yeah.
A permit for extensive lighting? So it's not a bad idea to...
Yep. There's several of them in this one. There's make-a-space, there's artist studios, there's...
We're like business incubators?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So, right, if we could just take some of these things that we're adding to this and make a list of them and then say, okay, let's go through our zoning and find places where it is and we could just do a zoning amendment that puts them into different places.
Yep.
It'd be like, particularly bouncy houses.
Um, I mean, I don't, I think the actual writing of a bylaw would be actually very easy. It's just the, the time constraint is actually looking through and thinking about, does this make sense here? Does this make sense here? If so, you know, if we did a brewery, distillery, do you have to have certain FAR requirement? It's going, it's going, it's pretty easy to figure out what we need and it's pretty easy to figure out where those might fit, but then the fine tuning is what would take some time of, you know, of making sure they...
The reason I'm asking this is I think the sense of the board is that to the extent it can be a high priority, we support doing this as soon as possible.
So maybe set up a subcommittee that can look at other bylaws and find other uses that we're missing.
Okay.
So...
Okay. So let's put that on the next agenda, just to, so we can officially do it. To do a bylaw update subcommittee for new, for newer uses.
How about, uh, business application bylaw amendment or...
Yeah.
Would the word business in there somewhere?
Commercial?
Yeah.
Great. Now that I've derailed this from the MBTA.
That was a good discussion, isn't it?
No, I mean, honestly, the impetus for these uses was when we were looking at rewriting the downtown.
Yeah.
Zoning and so those come up as applicable to downtown, to be honest, but we acknowledge they're applicable to many other zoning districts.
Right. Okay. Great. All right. So we have our different definitions.
There's a lot of them and we, we looked at some other MBTA community zoning bylaws for all these related definitions to the new mandate.
I was, uh, telling this to Gene earlier, I heard on the news this morning that Newton's City Council passed their MBTA bylaw today, or this week and the news report, again, I didn't watch the hearing or anything with that, was saying that it was actually interesting that some of the business owners were the ones that were upset by the bylaw and the mixed use and the city council's like, no, this is going to help you, like, having mixed use above business, but that was interesting.
Where did they pick?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure where they picked. It'd be some interesting choices in Newton. But I assume it's more of the downtown, but, um, but I don't know. But that was just, it was just an interesting report because usually it's, usually it's, we hear more resident comment than we hear about business comment, so I just thought that was interesting. But these are coming up and starting to really come to fruition.
Definitely.
Now. Okay. All right.
So establishment and applicability is pretty standard in any new district. Establishing a map that will, it's not ready yet, but we'll have to establish a map that becomes part of the zoning map because filed in the clerk's office. Applicability in relationship to underlying zoning, this is one of the sections I need, I think we need work on. We really have to specify that depending on which zoning they come under, and so you remember the Osgood, they could come under I-2, they can come under the Osgood or they can come under this overlay and the other zoning bylaw sections don't apply and we have to need language unless specifically called out in the bylaw, because we do call it out for special permits, that they'll have to satisfy site plan review for those and for affordable housing, they'll have to satisfy our special, our affordable housing requirement. So I need to work on that section and we'll come back with a revised pass. Underlying zoning is pretty straightforward. Subdistricts, we've defined them as Subdistrict 1, which is north end of a mall, and 2 as Osgood Landing. Combined, they comprise about 93 acres of land. Administration and enforcement, essentially this falls under the building commissioner once the plan approval is executed. If it's strictly plan approval without any special permit provision, then appeal period is at the time of building permit. If there's a special permit, then appeal period follows according to chapter 48, same as all your special permits. Permitted uses, we talked a bit about this, uses and dimensional requirements at a previous meeting. I think the key here is for the first set of permitted uses, um, as of right is townhouse and multifamily. We struck any single family or two-family from this bylaw. But in addition to that, similar to the Osgood, we included a number of other uses that would be by right plan approval. So again, they still come to you, all the information required is site plan. I mean, technically, if your preference was to be just townhouse and multifamily as by right, we could go that route, but I think it would be pretty onerous on people that want to do mixed-use developments. And so we have certainly a number of other uses that would be plan approval as of right uses.
Okay.
And then we go to uses by special permit.
What does, uh, number 16 on page 12 mean?
16? That's in a lot of zoning districts today. It's a current use. Halls, clubs, theaters, another indoor amusement. That's the one you referred to?
Yeah. I don't understand what halls and clubs mean.
Well, like the VFW is, can be a hall, the Masonic Lodge could be a hall.
Club is like a, uh...
Could be a VFW.
That is a click.
Couldn't the club be a very wide range of applications?
Yeah. Yes. I, I think...
I'd really have trouble with that, but...
If you want to strike it, Peter, we can absolutely strike it.
Well, it's, I mean...
I'm afraid it's in other sections already, which would be part of the subcommittee to strike it.
Yeah.
If we wanted to go that route.
So, and then maybe just building off of this comment, so, um, I agree with Peter, I think clubs may be a little too broad. But I'm just curious why indoor ice skating, like, it gets, it's very broad than, indoor ice skating is very, like, a very clear use? I'm just curious.
Well, it says including but not limited to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Other, other by, other bylaws have indoor ice skating as its own standalone use.
Oh, good. Oh, okay.
Strike club is, it's perfectly fine.
Well, do others disagree?
Well, I gotta think about it. So, the problem is club, are we thinking like a disco club? Are we thinking about, the word is definitely vague, right?
That's, that's my concern.
Is it disco club? Is it the, is it the Elks Club? Right? Those are two very different things.
No problem with those.
Right.
It's just any use can be described as a club. We are opening the door there to almost anything.
You could use a slightly different term and then add a definition in the definition section if you didn't want it to say just clubs in general. Maybe we could find a term that's more specific and then define it up top in the definition section.
What are we trying to, so halls, clubs, theaters?
If you wanted to allow those types of social clubs more than dance clubs, it sounds like?
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't, I think I understand. I don't think dance club is really our concern either, but, um, um, okay.
Look, someone who wants to put a facility that may not be allowed elsewhere, you can do it here because, oh, that's just a club. Yeah. Gene, I, I'm going to take it in a different direction, but a number of these have square foot limitations.
Yep.
If you exceed that, is it by special permit then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. That's the next section.
Yeah. Okay. Because I was going to say there, some of could easily be bigger than those numbers. Yeah. Okay.
So why don't we just put the, so two suggestions, either we can strike club or we can just put it into special permits? Is that what?
Special permits would work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Meaning this whole section?
Yeah. The hall, just the halls, clubs.
Okay.
Halls, clubs, theaters or other places of indoor amusement or assembly. Because the, as it, I think, I prefer that be by special permit because those could be, you could take a, you could have a, um, like a Chuck E. Cheese type place or you could have an Elks Club, both that fall under this, but it could have wildly different needs for parking and times. Like, it really could vary tremendously by the type, by the actual use more, more than, so I think I'd rather have it be by special permit so we can take into consideration all the noise and parking and other factors.
I think that's a great solution.
Okay.
Better than taking the word out.
And so 19's a case where I'm saying the reason we have to specify unless otherwise, you come in under the zoning and no other section of the bylaw is applicable, but 19 says if you're coming in with solar energy, then we get to go to section, Article 8, Section 12, to make sure they're compliant with our bylaw.
And just while thinking about clubs, but I know we have the, um, the, I don't know, sexually explicit location in town that things are allowed.
That's an asylum.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's the entertainment district.
Entertain, okay.
It's a specific zone.
Right. So, but can we say that that's not allowed in this district?
I don't think you have to because we already define it and we already have it in a certain zoning district.
Okay. But does that, but I guess my point is that like technically maybe that's a club and so could you, could someone argue that because it wasn't specifically not allowed here, that it's now allowed under the special permit here?
How are you doing this? Well, most is like an avoidance of doubt statement, it sounds like.
Well, yeah, but basically saying, you know, in uses by, just somewhere in saying that, I mean, I know we say that uses aren't specifically allowed, but I think, I think we should put that uses under that zoning are not permitted in any district.
So number 16 is already in special permit as number 13?
Because it's by, it's by square foot.
By square footage.
Oh.
Up to 20,000 and then greater than 20,000.
Thank you.
I just, I, while we, since we already have the zoning district, I'm sure that this isn't what anyone was planning, but I'd just be more comfortable just saying that the uses under that entertainment district?
Yep.
Are not permitted in this zone. Let's just, just be safe. Let's just be safe.
You had struck out how many of the uses?
Yeah, I did, because it seemed a little bit redundant.
Right.
Because we already state above that, any use not specified is not allowed and so we could either opt to keep that in with those prohibited uses and add the adult entertainment uses or we can, we can strike it and just add it here.
I, I would love to say just keep the adult entertainment ones out.
Out of 16.
Yeah.
Expressly.
Just, just, just make those, yeah, as the prohibited uses. As, just as a, just as a prohibited use. One of the reasons we struck, I think we struck the prohibited uses is because when you specifically define what's prohibited uses and then you don't see it, then you wonder if it really is prohibited or not prohibited.
So on 15, we've added on the special permit piece, again, it's felt and suspenders, but we list the, the criteria for issuing a special permit, which is in 10.7 of all your special permits. It's repeated here, but then in D, these are actually above and beyond our typical, not a nuisance to the neighborhood, not, you know, has appropriate utilities, things like that. And so...
Can I ask about the affordable housing?
Yeah.
You know, I had remembered that, that in order for us to be allowed to have this criteria, that we have to get to a financial thing, is that in process? Are we doing that through the state?
Yeah. Yep. So we have been contracted by, contracted by the town to be that independent reviewer and so we're in the process of putting that together in terms of starting the process. Hasn't begun, but we are doing that for you, yeah.
Okay. All right. Has, do you know of anyone that has an affordable housing requirement that has passed a MBTA bylaw and whether or not that's been approved by the state?
The state hasn't approved any yet, but they said they would send them to us once they have, so we're waiting to see what they approve, yeah.
Okay. All right. Great.
So in that, because our inclusionary zoning is by special permit?
Yeah.
This exempts the special permit requirement, but all other requirements are required.
Right.
Because I don't think we'd get through the state by saying a special permit for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So the bottom of 15D are the requirements above and beyond a typical special permit. So again, it just makes sure that the planning board has some flexibility to say that you can increase dimensional requirements if appropriate in order to protect neighborhoods. You can add more screening than required, things like that.
Can we add that we're allowed to require, um, post-project studies?
Yep.
So similar to what we've been doing, let's call out that we can ask them to study parking for, for things like parking, lighting, traffic or other, um, or other, um, impacts on...
Potential impacts.
Potential impacts on, on neighborhoods.
Is that under uses required by special permit that you want that attached to or under all the uses in the...
Um, I'd like, that's a good point. I mean, if we can do it for everything, I just don't know if we can, if we can say something.
I might check, uh...
Yeah. Check it, because I don't know if we can say it's by right?
Yeah.
But then require them to, to, to come up with, um, studies afterwards.
I would definitely be concerned about that.
Yeah.
Especially just the caveat being as a nuisance to neighborhoods, like...
Well, yep. And so do we do, as part of the plan review portion, do we do traffic studies and all that?
All the same information from site plan got carried here.
Yeah.
You'll have all that information.
I just wonder, okay. All right. Let's put it in the special permits. I kind of think that if you can study it and you can condition it and that you can study it afterwards, that it's all part of the same police power, but let's put it in for special permit just for...
If you'd like, I can ask with regular calls with the state?
Yeah.
About new things that come up, so I can ask if you can attach anything like that onto the by right use?
Yeah. It's sort of like, you heard earlier that we like to, if, if there's a concern about there being parking issues, we like to say, hey, can you just come back after you've actually built it and let's see if any of, if what you said was going to be the parking actually is the parking or if there are any issues that have come up that we can address. It actually, I find, gives us more of an ability to approve things, because we know that we have at least some study that we can do after the fact, and we're not just washing our hands of it.
Is there anything in here on resilience, resiliency? So what do I mean by that, you know, something that takes into account updated guidance on flood zones or other hazards that makes the property less, it doesn't prevent it, but it makes it less susceptible, so rather than a bunch of damage claims, they can withstand impacts in a worsening environment, and that would all come under a resilience-type thing.
We'll get to it when we go through, but yes, environmental, things like that, whether it's in the detail that you're expressing.
Yeah, maybe just building off of Peter's point, do we want to call out, need sub-district the proximity to like the Shoshine River and...
That's what I'm thinking, both of these, you have Merrimack and Shoshine, and so, but I would like to, rather than set a distance, because that may not be valid five years from now, have a sort of a broader resiliency standard.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea, because at least calls out within the bylaw that these are sensitive areas, right?
You need to build to be ready.
Yep.
So. I didn't mean to hold you up, Gene.
Where did we get?
You had a good momentum there.
I know we have comments about it, but I just can't see them right now. But they got to comply with all stormwater regs, Mass, State, and local, but that's fine.
Okay, so, but, all right, so why don't we put a note to see if there's somewhere where we can add some discussion or criteria for resiliency and environmental impact?
Yep.
Have they thought about giving any bonuses for, like, greasing or...
I think we're building, are we going to get there?
We've talked about it, and I asked you guys to collectively give me your thoughts on that, as to how you want to create...
Do you want to do that now, or should we keep going through the bylaw?
I would suggest keep going through it.
All right, so hold up, let's get through it, and then we can talk about that.
So development project phasing, obviously, these projects might be phased. This allows you to potentially condition their construction management plan to, to add to that if you have any concerns down the road of impacts to neighborhoods and things like that. So general guidelines, design guidelines are requests, they're not mandates, so it gives you all the flexibility in the world. The goal is to achieve these, but there's going to be circumstances where they can achieve all of them, and so you can waive them if they request waivers. And then, this whole section is very similar to the Asgard bylaw. What I did want to ask is C on number eighteen?
Page eighteen?
Page eighteen, yeah. Letter C.
Under open space? Or?
Under building and structure placement, which starts in seventeen.
Okay.
Letter C, non-residential uses are preferred but not required. We locate in buildings containing residential uses as long as the non-residential use in buildings are designed to complement the residential use, primary residential.
So that's saying mixed use is preferred?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, but I think we'll talk about, I think we should do some, I think we should talk about where, about different bonuses. I'd like to see a mixed use bonus, talking about a, a green or sustainability bonus.
Yep.
We'll get, I think we should talk about that at the end, but yes, that's, that's good.
Before we move on, we might be getting to this, but also within the design guidelines in, in terms of resilience and climate stuff, is there room to put any kind of design guidelines around sustainable building design, sustainable building design, you know, right, I'm looking at the language on page seventeen, where, you know, we're basically not wanting to supersede the state building code, but, you know, I have seen other communities do this, you know, within the design guidelines, because again, it's, you know, a request, not a mandate.
Okay, if you can send me anything that I can look at that you refer to, it'd be helpful.
I'm curious also from MVP's perspective, have you included anything like that in your other?
Not in these bylaws specifically, mostly because we've been, we've been trying our best to stay away from actual materials used in buildings, although I know your design guidelines reference that, and as Gene mentioned, it's not required, it's optional, mostly because when it comes to doing that economic feasibility analysis of affordable housing, if we're, we're not going to require, so we're just in a tricky situation where we don't want to make sure the cost of the construction gets higher than when we do the feasibility analysis of affordable units, if anything in the design guidelines were to make it more expensive to actually have the construction, we don't want that to have any challenges there. So we would just have to be explicit in the fact that it's a request, not a mandate.
It's always a difficult thing. I mean, we've, what I would say is we tend to use more persuasion as an approach to design guidelines than to absolutely mandate it, because, you know, if you say things like, we want it to be traditional colonial, what does that even mean?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it comes down to, it's only so far you can take it before, you know, I mean, it probably would make sense in some places, if you're an extremely local historical district, you might want to do something like that, but for the most part, I think it's very difficult to do.
Yeah, some other smaller communities are wanting to mandate the, like, materials used in it, so like brick over vinyl siding, or wood siding over vinyl, and in that case, they have to factor in the cost in terms of making their economic feasibility argument, so it's more challenging.
I guess I would just say, right, it'd be worth considering that, it seems like there's some interest among the other members in, you know, bonuses and things for green buildings, if that doesn't pan out, right, or if, you know, we're kind of piling bonuses on bonuses, and we, you know, don't think it will be able to pass, at least having something in the, the design guidelines would be.
Okay, yeah, so if you can find something that you've seen, that would definitely be helpful, and I tell you, I think the design guidelines are a great way to say, this, these are the types of buildings, and this is what we would love to see, but we understand that if we give you fifteen design guidelines, you might only be able to do ten, eleven, and twelve, but this is our ideal, and show us what you can do.
The word area where I think we've done that, Gene, correct me if I'm wrong, is like village commercial was sort of the standards we used there, I think might be something along the lines of what we're looking for.
All right, I'll review that. I don't think I've ever permitted anything.
Yeah, I mean, we've never done any, which is part of the, you know, for that reason, but it's kind of like parking impact, that sort of thing, you know, try to have more of a pedestrian-looking feel and so forth.
Yes, let me, I'll review it.
Okay.
Hey, Aunt Jean, you need, we should specifically look at?
I don't think so, until you get to, so there's a couple, I'll make red line edits going forward, so there's a few red line edits, but not material. When you get to parking?
Yeah.
For the most part, they're consistent with, you know, our, our parking table, as it exists today, but for multifamily dwellings, we looked at the recent multifamily projects, and as you know, most of them received some type of parking permit. Reduction permit, and they averaged in the low one point six something per dwelling unit, and so we've set it at one seven five as somewhat of a conservative approach, because we know mindset is typically, there's not enough parking, but in Minko, Avalon, and Princeton, we haven't had any complaints about parking, we haven't had any concerns raised, so one point seven five, rather than today's bylaw, which calls it out by bedroom type. Most people look at engineering standards and present to you what those standards would call for, and that's how they've permitted the multifamilies over the last five years or so. And then the other one that we haven't settled on, a recommendation yet, is restaurants and the brewery, distillery. So currently, we really don't break out restaurant use between fast food or bakery, it's, it's just restaurant, and the only criteria we break out is with the drive-through or not, and so we recognize that it's fifteen per thousand square feet of gross floor area, and, you know, in a strip mall like First and Main, that's probably over built, yet Joe Fish might need fifteen as a standalone on one twenty-five, where there's no queuing or off-street parking available, and so we're looking for something a little bit more flexible than fifteen per thousand square feet of gross floor area, in that definition.
Okay, I mean, when just looking at it compared to retail, I was thinking ten or ten to twelve or something.
Yeah, some people do it based on the number of seats, and then add a factor for the number of employees, it's just, it's, it's hard to, because it's contingent on where the site is, and whether it's in a built strip mall-type retail plaza environment versus a standalone.
But both of these are, right? I mean, this is in, this is in Asgard Landing, and this is at...
But each, each of our retail plazas, whether it's Bella's Roast Beef, the former Leclerc's, like, they're conditioned that if you get a restaurant, you have to come back, like, Messina's was the same, and they came back for reduction, and so it's been challenging, even with what we have, for, for a restaurant to go into any of these retail plazas.
But we've had, I mean, I can't, I can't, I mean, sometimes Messina's gets busy, but it's rare for any of these places to really have an issue.
The most recent one was Jasmine's Plaza, I mean, a woman opening a juice shop.
Right.
Like, needed fifteen per thousand square feet, and that was the entire plaza, so she got reduction.
I mean, the other, the other side of it, too, is that both these two sub-districts are serviced by the Mealy Route.
Yep.
So, and one of them, there's, oh, no, I, I thought one fourteen, that the bike lanes go all the way down there, but I don't think they do, so there's an option to justify their decreasing the parking requirement.
I agree, I agree, so unsettled there, but we'll, we'll come back to something for the next meeting. Okay, and then there's also a provision, oh, to back up for a little bit, so the top of page thirty-three, but we envision these to kind of be like the forty R, with potentially have internal drive access lanes, and so there's a provision, and again, indifferent whether you want to pull it or not, but we account for on-street parking, the ability to count that towards your parking deed within, within this district. And letter F is modification in parking requirements. Again, if, if you can show that these findings are there, it would allow you, without a special permit, to modify the parking requirements. And then on page thirty-nine, I found the environmental strategies, so this is part of the application material, to write a narrative of all their environmental strategies. Circulation to other boards, I'm going to add in, if I didn't on this copy, school department, because obviously it's multifamily housing, so we're definitely going to want school department to weigh in on that. And for procedures for filing the decision on this plan approval, we have within ninety days of the close of the public hearing, as opposed to the limited site plan, it was ninety days from the application being filed, so this gives ninety days, it's not fourteen, which is a special permit. And that's stated twice, render a decision within ninety days.
So if we wanted to do bonuses, the two that I've heard, I've heard for mixed use, and I've heard for green, sustainable, you know, resiliency, if, if, if the building to add to or enhance, you know.
So for mixed use, we put up to twenty units per acre, as opposed to fifteen, I'm looking for the dimensional section.
So do we have that in here somewhere?
Yeah, I just have to find the dimensional section, if anybody finds it ahead of me. Oh, here we go, page thirty-four. So number eight on thirty-four, maximum dwelling units per acre is fifteen, so twenty dwelling units per acre by special permit, if the development project includes mixed use. And eight on, based on your comment, number three, we've updated the maximum building height in sub-district one, north end of Mall, to be three stories, thirty-five feet.
Okay.
If commercial first floor, allow up to four stories, fifty-five feet. Sustainability, I just, I don't know, Ian, if you've seen any bonuses centered around that, but I know Jim has done a lot of research, so if there's anything specific that you think fits, definitely incorporate that.
Yeah, I think the most common we've seen recently has been in terms of the parking requirement, because the two have gone together in terms of the amount of car usage on-site, and just as, if they care about sustainability, they probably also care about car use, so being able to restrict the amount of parking on-site, or lower the parking minimums, we've seen, as well as just general, the other ones that you mentioned in terms of density and height has come up, but I would say the parking one is more common, I don't know.
You're talking about sustainability?
Sustainability, so like, what, what can we do to, sustainability, environmentally friendly, or even some of the resiliency, if you proactively go ahead and address those things? Like, we can put them in the guidelines, fine, but if you actually do it...
What type of energy use? Is it, is he like a gas, a gas-free, right, or fossil fuel, or?
Is it G O three? If we go there, I vote against anything that's, I would not go there.
No, so the question is, if you do, not requiring.
Correct.
Not requiring, but if you do something along those lines?
Right.
Can you get something extra? That's what we're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
If we're gonna, yeah.
No, 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 not as a mandate, no, 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 but just as an extra, not that you have to, we could put it in our design guidelines as, hey, this would be nice, nothing's required, in terms of like sustainability, but if you do go ahead and proactively say, yes, I will go gas-free, or I will, you know, or we will use certain lighting, or, you know, whatever the case may be, what would be an appropriate thing to, to grant you?
So two things, first, just taking a step back on what the, right, standard would be, there are several different sort of certification bodies out there that will look at these things, past house, LEED, I think it's International Living Futures Institute, they'll, you know, give some kind of certification that it's a, you know, sort of green building. The one, so I, there was a couple of different communities who have done stuff around density, there's probably more that I'm not finding, but the one that seemed most similar was, you know, Acton had done for LEED certification, I think it was up zero point zero five, in create, add around the floor area ratio. I'm not one hundred percent sure how, you know, I have to think a little bit about what that actually means in, in practice, but I had not found anything with the parking, so I'm interested in looking at that a little bit more. And I would say, like, you know, those are pretty high, high thresholds, they, they're kind of, like, all three of those certifications are, you know, you have to check the box in a number of areas across several different factors, so I don't know, you know, there's the question of, like, is a, is the incentive enough to get people to want to do it, but, you know, it's, if it's not enough, then, you know, maybe it's not enough.
Right, and then, do you have a sense of what the cost is for that?
I don't, not, not just from...
So that's my question, because I think we should try to make it consistent, like, I really want these to be mixed use, so if you do mixed use, you get this bonus, great, and it's a density bonus of units, so I think it makes sense to stay consistent, and not do one be units and one be floor area ratio, so I take, make it with units, but I don't think it should be the same on the number, I would do a lower number.
Independent bonus.
Yes, correct, correct, independent, you could, you could add them on.
Exactly, so you can do, you can add to the bonus, you just do mixed use, then you get a bonus, and then you do mixed use plus green, then you get a both of the bonuses, or you just do green ones?
Correct, so I'm thinking like two units or something like that, but I mean, I guess we'd need some guidance as what would be an appropriate number that would both be incentivizing, but also not be trivial.
I'm happy to take a look and see what the standard has been, I haven't looked into that recently, but I can check, too, we have a couple environmental planners on staff that may have dealt with some of this in bylaw writing before, that I can check with, too, and see if there's been a standard, but off the top of my head, I don't have an answer for you on the specifics of it, just where the bonuses have been, yeah.
Yeah.
My, my initial, just, if we're doing five for mixed use, I think two, but that's just kind of a gut reaction.
Yeah, certainly some certifications, especially LEED certification, tend to be more expensive than others, and so the incentive might not be worth it, because they're not saving enough money.
Right, but it may be something that they want to do anyway, because that's, maybe that's their brand, is that they're, you know, we're moving towards these things, and we're doing it anyway, I don't know, and so if we're going to do it anyway, we might as well get the bonus.
You could also look at other, you know, having some kind of target E U I, or, you know, looking at if, if, you know, maybe passive houses, right, LEED is sort of like, my understanding, it's sort of like the most prestigious one, right, there's other, there's other options that are a little bit more...
Yeah, I think we got to be a little bit careful that we don't go super deep into, like, almost building code issues for a zoning bylaw, because I think we're coming to things that are a little bit different, and, you know, the mixed use one is clean, direct, if, if you have any other one, you have to do something that's just very simple and very obvious.
So I think that's a good point, because if we say LEED certification, and now that program changes, or there's a new program or something like that, then what do we do? Because either you can't qualify it, or maybe they change it and make it really easy, then we're kind of stuck with that. So I think to your point, maybe we leave it more that, you know, a bonus at the discretion of the planning board at the time is available for sustainability, and we give some examples, but not set it in stone, because, right, the building code might change. but not set it in stone, because, right, the building code might change, right, so that's why we say, you have to meet up to the building code, but we don't actually say it's this, and this, and this. Hey, that's a good point.
If I can add?
Yeah.
For me, one of the main reasons to have this kind of regulation within zoning is because of the incentives that are available through the utilities, and I think there's typically like a chronic problem of builders not really bringing those incentives into the planning process early enough. By the time they have their full plan, by the time they, they're, they come to Mass Save looking for money, they're sort of too far designed to make the adjustments to where the incentives are going to get them to where they need to be, where it is financially feasible. So, bringing it up earlier in the process actually contributes to making it so that making these, you know, better choices are going to also, you know, lead to a better bottom line for the project. And I'm not insensitive to the fact that sometimes doing these things is more expensive, there are incentives to try and, you know, cover that gap, and I think sometimes projects miss out on those incentives because they're not proactive enough.
So I think what we can do is, I think we can be more specific in our design guidelines, and say, these are the things we want to see, we'd love to see you get LEED certification, we'd love to see you be gas-free, we'd love to see these types of things, and then set the bonus to say, if you, you know, cooperation with and application of this design guideline or other green-friendly methods at the discretion of the board could lead to a bonus of, you know, two units per acre, whatever, something like that. So I think, I totally get it, I think, but I think, I think to John's point, we have to be careful of how detailed we are in our bonus structure, but we can be more detailed in our design guidelines, I think, because they're optional.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, if you step outside, at, at one level, taking this to town meeting should be a pretty simple thing, but at another level, if you get a group of people cherry picking the detail?
Right.
They'll rip the thing apart, it, it could turn out to be ugly, so I think you got to be careful about overreach in this, yeah.
Good point.
Yep, that's fair.
I, I'm sensitive to that, by the way, I think, right, the, the fact of having two layers of, of bonuses is also a little, right, what does that actually look like if they satisfy everything and get the full double bonus, I guess you would say?
Okay, okay. Jean, does that help with guidance?
Yeah.
Okay. Andrew, Ian, anything else we should be talking about?
No, I was going to say, that makes sense, and we'll do some looking into it, and Jean and I, we can chat about it, as we see what other communities have done similarly.
And any information you have that you can put the framework of a bylaw to it, would be helpful.
Can I ask a question separately? Jean, I saw, I saw, maybe Andrew was, that there's an ADU survey that went out?
Yeah.
Are we looking to do that bylaw for this town meeting?
No, absolutely not.
Right, okay. All right, just making sure. I know that, I love that there's a discussion going on, and I see it going on, and so I, but I just wanted to make sure we're not, we don't need to focus on that, in terms of the bylaw.
No, so the select board had a goal for this year?
Right.
To start the conversation?
Okay.
So that was really?
That's starting the conversation.
The first start of the conversation. We had a great response, those 233 people responded.
Yeah.
But I, that gives me a little reminder, so on Thursday night, there's a housing production plan update, public meeting, there'll be a breakout session on ADU, said that too. Again, just another way for public engagement, but if anyone's available Thursday night, it starts at 6:00 at the senior center, and it's just all about housing and updating our housing production plan.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for tonight? Next steps or next, so what, what, when does, when do we discuss again?
So, on the 19th, we'll bring back red line edits.
Yeah.
And hopefully, if we can get our arms around some of the sustainability-type guidelines, we'll include that, and then we hope to send it off to the state by the end of the, the end of December, so they can begin their review, they have up to 90 days, but like we said before, I would envision your review's going to be concurrent, so we'd probably carry this on every agenda, from now to public hearings.
And when do we do more of the community outreach and engagement? Because I think to John's point, as a whole, I think people are going to get this, but if some, if, I don't want someone to look at 19.14 and be like, oh no, I don't like that, and then, you know, I think we do need to engage early about the very broad benefits of why we're doing this, and also the, try to pick off some of the big concerns of, does this mean we're going to have all this housing popping up right away, and things like that?
So we've already had?
I know we've had some meetings, but when do we?
With you, the select board, we've had public meetings, people attended the last in-person one.
Yeah.
We've had a remote one, I believe, early on, and this is also on Thursday night's meeting, and it's going to be one of the breakout sessions as well.
Okay.
And so, there's only three different breakout sessions, ADU, this, and in general, goals and strategies on housing. So, but, we've been out there, I, as always, it's just challenging to get people to participate.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think there's definitely been a good discussion, I just, I just want to be able to take that we have, you know, a bylaw, we have this in paper now, and let's actually start discussing, you know, getting it out there.
And there's a couple things that we can help with in that regard, too, one of the things we did for the last public meeting was do a, a one-pager on what this is, instead of FAQs. When the bylaw's fully drafted, we could do an updated one-pager on a simple explanation of the town's bylaw, and then in other communities, we are looking at doing what we're calling pre-town meeting sessions, where a week before, a month before, whatever time it makes sense, we're having another community meeting, where we basically present the final bylaw and the requirements, so that residents can fully understand what's happening.
I think what it is and what it's not, right?
Yep.
That it's not a mandate that buildings go off, it's not a mandate that these, that we have this particular housing, it's not a mandate that has to be a mixed use or anything like that, it's the, you know, state's requiring it, all these towns are doing it, here's a list of towns that have done it recently, and this is what we're doing to comply with the state law.
Yeah, so there's also a webpage on our, on our website.
Okay.
And all these types of presentations get posted there.
Great.
And as you all continue to hear feedback from the public, if you hear feedback from the public on this, if there are common concerns that come up, certainly please make us aware of that, so we can include those, either FAQs or comments in our future communications, that we make sure that's addressed.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I haven't heard anything particularly as to this, I'm just trying to use the input that we've gotten about other projects to see what might be a concern. I mean, I think to John's point, I think people are going to have a sense that we have to do it, and that we have to do something.
I, I, I mean, at some level, you want to stress that, I mean, because looking back in the fullness of time, when we did the original Asgard, you know, where you are, that was a slam dunk, people, you know, it was presented, you studied the issue carefully, this is best practices, hardly any questions got raised at all, but rolled forward, you know, over the last five years, forget about how you voted with Royal Crest, one way or the other, it's stirred up a lot of emotion, and what you don't want to do is have people think this is Royal Crest 2.
Right.
And so you, you want to flush out any opposition and potentially cut it off early, if you can, you know?
Right, because we've had, we had the Housing Moratorium, we have Royal Crest, we've had other larger projects, and we don't want this to seem like this is the town's answer to get around that, when it's, that it's not anywhere near what it is.
Exactly.
But you could misread it that way.
Yeah.
That's, that's my concern.
That's a good point.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the biggest, I mean, it, we have to do it, this is a good bylaw, these places make sense, and all of this just makes intuitive sense of where we would want to have these projects if they ever did come to fruition, but given that they're larger project with bigger numbers, and they're multifamily, you know, if you, someone could easily jump to the conclusion that this is a stakeholder trying, this is just trying to come around and sneak it in, and it's not, so I think we just got to be clear on that. Okay, awesome. All right, that's all for that. All right, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 21st?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's all for tonight. What do we have for the next meeting? So we're going to continue to talk about this.
Yep.
Do we have anything else coming up?
You want me to carry the late discussion, and the Quinnipob Rosemarygs?
No, I don't, I don't think we need to at this point, let's come back to them.
Okay.
I did, you know, let's come, well, let's come back, I don't think we need to right now. Any other public hearings opening?
Yep, you have two opening next meeting, one of which is 189 Willow Street, which is a refiling, the, the ones that just withdrew without prejudice.
Uh-huh, okay.
Essentially, they've reduced the building size 1,000 square feet, so from 7,700 to 67.
We'll see, okay.
And 220 Sutton Street, which is the Bueno Bistro building, so behind Bueno Bistro, there's some open space, they want to put a daycare in, so they're coming in under limited cycle and review as well.
Oh, okay, so a little second one. Okay. All right, very good. Okay, can, so next meeting is the 19th. Happy Hanukkah to anyone who celebrates in the interim. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.